This meeting of the Margate City Planning Board for December 21st, 2023 is called to order. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Tom Collins.
Yeah.
Craig Palmasano.
Yeah.
Richard Patterson.
Here.
John Pitts.
Here.
Michael Cristaldi. Jim Galantino.
Here.
Margaret Gubernalty.
Here.
Remy Pelosi. Stephen Giasecki.
Here.
Michael Ruffew.
Here.
Andrew Campbell.
Here.
Michael Richmond.
Here.
This meeting is being held in accordance with due public notice thereof and pursuant to the New Jersey State Sunshine Law. Notice of this meeting has been advertised in the press and a copy of same has been posted on a bulletin board in the municipal building. All applicants are hereby notified that should you receive board approval tonight, you must come forward and sign a form which informs you regarding timing of receiving building permits and mercantile licenses. At the end of your case tonight, please see the board administrator to sign the two information sheets. I'd like to hear a motion for the approval of the minutes for the meeting of November 16th, 2023.
I'll make that move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I'd like to hear a motion for the approval of decisions and resolutions. Number 46, 2023, Jeffrey and Christine Popple. Number 47, 2023, Davco Construction, Inc. And number 48, 2023, Mark J. Levine.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. First case is Yuri Litvin, 17 South Benson Avenue, Block 124, Lot 47, located in the S-40 zoning district seeking...
Do you want to do a little house cleaning because of the case that's not here?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was gonna say, um, just a quick announcement. The fourth case, the fourth case shown on our agenda, Rhodes LLC, 7807 Atlantic Avenue, which is 19... 7807 Atlantic Avenue, 19 South Essex Avenue, and 17 South Essex Avenue, which is Block 105, Lots 5, 6, and 8, which is the Roberts Place application, is not going to be heard tonight. That's going to be heard at our January hearing, which is...
25th.
January 25th, 2024, 6:30 PM in this room. The applicant will not be required to republish or renotice, so that's your official... If anyone's here for that, I don't want you to sit here all night just to learn that, but it'll come back next month and that's when that'll be heard.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jim. I'll start again. Located in the S-40 zoning district, seeking sea variance relief for front yard setbacks to the house and porch, front yard landscaping area, and potentially others for the construction of a new single-family home. They are current on taxes, water, and sewer payments, and proof of advertising and notifications have been provided. Mr. McLarnan, please be sworn in.
Okay, Mr. McLarnan, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you'll give throughout this evening will be the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. The report is based on the application of Yuri Litvin, 17 South Benson Avenue, Block 124, Lot 47, located in the S-40 zoning district, FEMA zone elevation 10. Required first floor elevation is a minimum of 14 feet. This is a hardship variance and a substantial benefit variance as well. Background is as follows. Relief from the city's ordinance is required to construct a new flood-compliant single-family structure located on Atlantic City side of the unit block of South Benson Avenue within the S-40 zoning district. The shape of the lot is unusual in the fact that it is opposite of the flag lot with a narrow section in the rear of the lot versus the frontage. The ordinance, in order to reduce curb cuts, requires access... Actually, that's to be struck in front of this report because the easement in the back belongs to the houses on Cedar Grove Avenue, not Benson Avenue. So, page two of the zoning chart highlighted and... Are the variances required? On page three, section two of the documents reviewed to construct this report, the variances required are as follows. Front yard setback to the building, whereas a minimum required front yard setback based on prevailing setback is 22.3 feet, 20.4 feet exists, and 16.5 feet is proposed. Front yard setback to the deck and porch, whereas a minimum required front yard setback for decks and porches based on the prevailing setback is 16.7 feet, 14.2 feet exists, and 9.5 feet is proposed. Front yard landscape coverage, whereas the maximum required front yard or minimum front yard landscape coverage is 60%, 27% exists, and 42% is proposed. Swimming pool setback, whereas a minimum setback to many side or rear property line is 6 feet and 5.625 feet is proposed on both sides. So technically, there's two variances for the pool setback. No waivers have been requested. Comments are as follows. Again, I discussed the Cedar Grove Avenue and the easement in the back is part of those properties, not this property. Lot frontage is 40 feet and minimum lot frontage for S-40 is 50 feet. This is an existing non-conforming lot frontage. Lot width is predominantly 40 feet and 40 feet is where the dwelling will be located. However, the average weight at lot width is 32.184 feet. Applying 40 feet is appropriate. Lot depth does not have a minimum bulk standard requirement, however, rear yard setback is based on lot depth. The rear yard setback is based on a minimum lot depth and is correctly applied in this application. Front yard landscaping does not meet the minimum as the building is occupying the front yard setback. It may be implied that variance granted for front yard setbacks requires a variance for front yard landscaping, as is the case. All other landscape requirements, tree, shrubs, and total coverage will be met. The portion of the lot having 2.5 stories over parking meets a minimum lot width requirements. The interpretation is correctly applied. All mechanical equipment shall be higher than the first floor elevation at or higher than fourth floor elevation. All street parking requirements are being met, however, the access to be from the alley again strike that. All street park requirements are being met. Confirm that the driveway in the front yard setback is at least one foot. Again, testimony can provide that. And, uh, again, added later on was the setbacks to the pools. I didn't catch that at first, but I found it later on. So that will conclude my report this time.
Chairman. Eric Colstein, I'm ahead of the applicant. First of all, I just want to thank Roger. This report was a subject of a lot of back and forth with Mr. Weiss and myself and Roger, and really did some digging a little deeper than we normally do into the Cedar Grove issue with their cartway and how it would or would not affect the Benson Avenue properties. I think after looking at some old historic deeds, we came up with the report that we have now, which we concur with wholeheartedly that the parking issue with not on the Cedar Grove alley has to come in from Benson, as Roger just pointed out. This is one of those cases we do actually qualify under two potential categories of variance, either the hardship or the flexible city. Pete Weiss is with me here, has prepared a little bit of a plan different from what he normally would do to show this odd kind of flip-flop, as Pete said, yin and yang law. You've got the real flag lot next door, and then you've got the reverse flag lot next to it. It's almost like in a retro set where this probably was one at some time years ago, and now you've got smaller in the rear and smaller in the front next door. But we do have enough front... And as Roger's report points out, the lack of usable space in the rear forces the house forward. So when we're talking about our variance for front yard, and we also agree with Roger that it triggers the landscape variance, it's because if we push the house back further, we'd be too close to an odd-shaped property line that comes in on this Lego piece right here. So we have to be forward of that. Oh, okay. So we're forward of that property line, but it does create variances that are necessary, and this is a buildable lot of record. The pool, it's almost like the area in the rear was almost made for this because this is like a waste of space, and the property owner thought it would be a good idea to at least get some usable area out of that, and that's why the pool's going in the rear there. So that's by the preamble. I'd ask Mr. Manos to please swear in Pete Weiss, and then we'll have him testify as to the architecture of the house, of course, and then the positive and negative criteria. So Pete.
Pete, just give us your name and business address, please.
Peter Weiss, 38 East St. Cross Avenue, North Hill.
And please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth? And we recognize his credentials, I assume.
All right, Pete, you've been sworn. We've gone through the plan with Mr. McLarnan. We've gone through it with the property owner. So walk us through your design here and then flip the property map over so we can talk about the house itself and the variances we're seeking based on the quite odd shape of that lot.
I'd be curious about why this came about. I would like to... I just want to point out one thing real quickly. The flag lot, basically, this whole front portion is just sort of an entryway to get to the house that sits all the way in the rear of the lot, so that gives us... So as mentioned, it's an irregular lot. It's shorter on the left side, deeper on the right side. What we propose to do is demolish the existing building and construct a new two-and-a-half-story house over parking, over ground floor, with pool in the rear. So the ground floor has your typical stuff, storage, entry, and a garage. The first floor has a living space and a deck in the front. Second floor has three bedrooms, two baths, and a deck in the front. The third floor has two bedrooms, one bath, and no deck in the front. The total living space is 2,523 square feet, so it's, you know, basically an average-sized house. Nothing extravagant. Ground level will be stucco. The upper floors will be a combination of horizontal and boarding pad and fiberglass siding. As Eric mentioned, this area of the lot, since it's only 17.7 feet wide, it's too narrow to put any part of the building back here. So the only reasonable thing to do is to put the pool, which the owner wanted, into this piece because originally I wanted to put it behind the building, but that wouldn't leave much lot for the building, you know, between the setbacks and within the pool and everything. It would push the building way to the rear of the building towards the front even further. So this seems pretty custom-made to fit a narrow pool in there, so...
And Pete, having the pool there doesn't change the coverages. We're still, with regard to the project, pretty under on our actual house and lot coverage, correct?
Yeah, the building coverage is noticeably under what's permitted, and the lot landscape coverage is noticeably over what's required, even with the pool. So we're trying to get a six-and-a-half-foot wide pool, which isn't very wide, but as I mentioned, the lot is only 17.75 feet wide in the rear. So if you do the math, it's coming up to a setback of five foot seven and a half inches on either side. If we were to apply the six-foot on either side, the pool would be like five foot nine wide, which is kind of unusable. So I was, you know, thinking for that. Then I think the rest is pretty self-explanatory. I mean, due to the fact that all the other lots on the block are 108 feet deep, and we're effectively, you know, a little over 70 feet deep. I think the difference of 38 feet shorter than everybody else on the block. So that pretty much forces this building forward on the lot in order to make it developable.
Pete, would it be fair to say that the neighborhood development pattern with the other homes being on bigger lots and not the flag lots in the rear caused this house to have, based on your design, a hardship that would qualify under the municipal land use law, both for the hardship variance as well as for the flexible city, that the granting of this would be better than not granting it? The benefits far outweigh any perceived detriment? And could you find, based on your design, any detriments that could be associated with this? Because we're really forced into this house based upon the rear cut-in on that Lego piece, and then, of course, the pool is just a factor of having a little bit of room in the back that we want to take advantage of. But as you indicated earlier, we're over on total landscape coverage by a significant amount, and we're under on building coverage by a very significant amount. So based on that, would you say that there's any possibility of a negative associated with this stall?
I would say no.
Mr. Patterson, I'm sure the board has some questions. We clearly are here to answer them, but this is a case where we do have an actual hardship. A lot of times we come in and we talk about whether or not a hardship exists based upon the unusual shape of the lot. The municipal land use law speaks to shapes of lots constituting a hardship. Here, I think that's fairly clear, but we'll answer any questions if the board has them regarding this design or Pete's layout of the house with the pool.
So Eric, just a quick question. Nice design, nice presentation. I'm sure you realize that years back, this board had a much larger setback for...
10 feet, I remember well.
And we did. And we agreed as a group in public on the record that we would reduce it to six, but hold firm on the six because of safety and concern. You might want to consider, if you want a pool, moving it up into the patio, redesigning it, making a small lap pool, and putting your patio in the back. Anything where you're not asking for a variance because it's... That's a hard line to cross, so...
Okay. Mr. Collins, as usual, the back and forth, colloquy, clients here, that's good. We're going to eliminate the six-foot, I mean, eliminate the variance and have it comply with six feet on either side. It may ultimately lengthen the pool, but we don't need a variance for that, so we're going to just eliminate the side yard variance for that.
You're a wise man.
Well, good word. You know, they're wise men this time of year. They're out there everywhere. Not here, of course, but there. Right. And, wait a minute. Paul.
Thank you, Eric.
All right. So with that, I think we'll amend to make it six feet on both sides, and the rest of it, we're going to leave as it is. Thank you. We know you have some other cases tonight, so we're here to answer, but otherwise, we're going to wrap.
Could you maximize the coverage? Like you said, you're under on the coverage, the building coverage. Is it possible to maximize the coverage on that lot? Well, the answer's kind of no. You meet the... You're under coverage because of that flag that sticks back, because that's included in the total land area.
You can do waivers in the back.
No. No, I understand. If you cut off that flag, you'd have a 70-by-40-foot lot, which is big for a S-25. This is S-40. But on there, you would build a smaller house that fit in. You wouldn't even be asking for this.
Right. That's correct.
So it's...
Peter, I would bring that because we know it'll be a tough case. When I saw this in the flag lot in the back, and Roger points out that it makes everything move forward, it changes the...
No, I understand, but the fact that it's... Is way under on building coverage really is kind of a misconception because you're as big as you can be.
Well, I think in those cases, it's limited more by setbacks than coverage.
Yeah. Yeah. But the fact that you're 10% over on landscaping is a real bonus, even... You know, that doesn't matter where it is. It's green.
It's going to be his house to live in and enjoy, so...
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, well, that is all.
Every... Every house down that block seemed to be exactly the same frontage. I mean, I'm looking at it here on Google Earth, and I just drove down. It's almost identical, so it's not like they're setback because they have a deeper lot. So they have a really far setback that would make it a hardship for you, but everybody's exactly the same. You know what? Never mind. I withdraw the question.
At this end of the block, which is beyond the 200 feet, you've got a building out pretty much at the property line on this corner here.
Also a different zone.
It's beyond the 200 feet, I've done show up in the...
Right. Right.
The same goes with the lot next door. That's a little closer, too, so...
As the lawyers say, I withdraw the question. Anything else on the board? Anyone here from the public have any questions, comments? Public portions closed. Excuse me. John?
Yeah, I have a comment. If you remove the decks on the front, would you meet the setback from the landscape requirements?
Well, the building is setback. I mean, that's a variance also.
Well, John, I can say to that that this board has been encouraging open fronts for neighborliness and getting along, so that's... Okay. If there's no other questions on the board, Leo, could you...
Is everyone okay with that third floor?
What?
There's a lot of... To me, it doesn't meet the intent of the ordinance of being in the roof.
What?
It's all wall. Oh, is this an eve height variance?
I think so.
Oh, I'm sorry. There is another variance. Eve height, 18 inches.
If you look on the left side elevation, actually, and the right side elevation, we're... The ordinance says the third floor has to be within the roof of the second floor, and it's not.
Well, either way, we'll have to vote on that, whether we pass it or not. That's an additional variance that needs some discussion.
Sorry to spring it on you, but did you discuss that? The whole third floor is a dormer.
No. No, that's... We just saw that. Well, just like the pool, Tom. Left side elevation.
You're talking about the height of that wall? You see it in the front elevation, in the front elevation on the left side picture?
Look at the rear elevation.
Yeah, you see it here, too.
Yeah, right here.
Right here. On the front elevation and this elevation.
All right, so what's... What is that additional variance? Eve height. I see no more than 18 inches.
This, when I'm at that high eve height, it might be so much.
It's supposed to be within the...
It makes that wall...
I'm not saying for the favor, that's what it is. He wants...
This right here. Yes, yes, yes. That's a solid wall. That roof should be down into this roof. So that may go up to the middle of the house.
Yeah, but it's going to kill a staircase.
So quick question from Roger.
Mr. Galantino said that that could be because of the staircase. Does that... You look underneath the wall? And if so, then does that justify a variance? Or is there a remedy that they could come up with that would make it so there is no variance? It's quick on me, so I'm asking you to clarify it, if you don't mind.
Basically, it's two variances. One is dormer area large in a 40%, and eve height greater than 18 inches.
Oh, the entire fix is dormer.
The entire floor is a dormer.
So then how do we... How do they rectify this?
They can request a dormer or those two variances, or they can, as a condition of approval, when they submit zoning plans, they'll comply.
So we talk to the property owner. What we'd like to do is have the board consider the plan as submitted, and then to the extent that is not approved, and Pete and the property owner will go back to the drawing board. But we think, based on the location, based on the fact that we don't want it to be just your standard cookie cutter house, it's a little bit different with the roof and everything off the left side of the house, we prefer to go in with that roof line, knowing that it's a variance, knowing that we need more testimony from Pete, if he can discuss that. So I guess we have to put on the record the positives and negatives about the roof. Do you and your professional opinion find that that roof as designed poses any negative at all towards the municipal land use law of the state of New Jersey or the zone code of the city of...
No, I think, going in, I... Basically, this sort of gameboard roof has become the standard somehow that... I don't necessarily agree with that. That complies with the ordinance. They specifically didn't want to do that, which is kind of why we went this direction. So, you know, we ended up with this sort of asymmetrical situation on the third floor. So at certain level, yeah, you may be impacting the neighborhood on one side a little bit more than you're impacting on the other side less, so... Complicity, I think, it's the same impact as if we had a different roof.
And the roof as it's positioned now isn't a variance based upon proximity to the property line, correct? It's not too close, satisfies the side yard setback. It just doesn't satisfy the roof pitch, the dormer part of the ordinance, right? Yeah. Do you find anything in your design posing a negative towards the municipal land use law or the city of Margate's zone, correct?
The problem I see is this was sprung on you and us. Roger missed it, and Peter missed it in putting it together. I mean, I feel in my heart now, well, geez, whatever, let's approve it. And then it happens again and again. I think you might have had to change this if we had seen this on time. And again, it's not like, you know, shame on you and shame on Roger. It's just... Are you in a hurry and you want to look at it for a month, or is that...
No, I think we prefer to get the vote taken.
You're ready to go.
Yeah.
Eric, would you be open to just making this a separate variance, a separate vote since we did that?
Yeah, absolutely.
And then if the board doesn't feel we've had enough information and don't want to pass it, then you could just revert to what's...
Yeah, Pete and the property owner would have to go back to the drawing board. We wouldn't come back. They would comply or figure something out. Yeah.
This is kind of like redesigning the whole third floor. Is that what we're talking about? If you moved the two bedrooms to the center of the house, then it's had roofed on all sides, is that correct? But then you have a staircase to deal with. Is that the problem? But if it was in the... If this third floor was in the center more, then the eve would be down lower, correct?
Well, on the one side, yeah. The other side would be...
But the staircase is the problem, I imagine.
I mean, this is what we've been trying to get away from, is that 40-foot wall there.
All right, so based on what Mr. Collins said, we would be seeking the variances that we applied for minus the pool side setbacks in one vote, and then in a separate vote, the third floor...
The new variances, right?
We're comfortable with that.
Okay, well, we need to open it up for public comment again. If anyone here from the public now has any questions or... Mr. Suter, do you have any question? No, you're all right? Okay, public portions closed again.
All right. All right.
We'll do the first.
We're going to do two separate votes. The pool's going to comply, so that goes away, but there's going to be a vote on the front yard setbacks. There's three of them, then separately for the two roof-related variances. And I'll just note, if anything's approved, the conditions of approval will be all standard, the standard conditions, the...
Non-convergent.
Non-convergent agreement, all reps, anything in Roger's report. So the first motion and the second we'll need is for the following sea variances. There's a front yard setback to the house with 16.5 feet or 22.3 feet is the requirement, and the front yard setbacks to the deck and porch, they're at 9.5 feet, where 16.7 feet is required, and then front yard landscaping's at 42%, where 60% is required. So that's the first vote. Second, and a... So that's the first vote, second, and a roll call vote. A first motion, second, and a roll call vote. I make a mo... Okay. I make a motion?
I'll second it.
Tom Collins?
Good presentation. Nice to see you back here, Pete. And it's nice to have a homeowner who's very reasonable and, you know, understands the situation. Did an excellent job. I think that this does meet your criteria. It is a betterment for the neighborhood. It will enhance the neighborhood. I see no negative impacts on it, and I think you have a good project. So I vote yes.
Craig Palmisano?
Yeah, I agree with Tom. It's an odd-shaped lot, very odd, and Peter did a nice job on the design of the house, except for we got to work on that third floor. The pool, not every lot is meant to have a pool. They said that we jamming them in, and this one, we need... We go by that six foot, so... But I'm going to approve these ordinances, or these variances, yes.
Richard Patterson?
I approve it, but this is for that neighborhood, I mean, for that zone, even though it's forty feet, it's a smaller lot, and we have wanted smaller houses on smaller lots. It's over forty... It's forty feet, so it has the third floor. But I just added up the square footage, it's twenty-four hundred or under twenty-four hundred, so it's really not an excessively large house, so for the same reasons as everyone else, I approve.
John Pitts?
Yeah, I am of the opinion that we need to be designing and building homes that are appropriately sized for the lot. It is, even if you take the flag off, it's a reasonably sized lot. Home could be designed to fit in there, I vote no.
Jim Galantino?
Hopefully, this sets a precedent for the other piece of Lego, which is the opposing house that is really odd-looking house. I like the way that the... It looks like the... You have a nice tree line that separates the odd-looking house, gives you some privacy. And I agree, the hardship does fall on this vote. I vote yes.
Margaret Guber Nolte?
I think this is a nice design. I think it fits into the neighborhood. I see this as a hardship based upon the size of the lot. I don't think that the house is oversized, it's not excessive. I think the benefits certainly outweigh the detriment, and I vote in favor of the application.
Stephen Jisaki?
I necessarily don't see the hardship, because you have a buildable lot even without the flag, and that would be usable space. I mean, we call it a yard. And I think that... Yeah, I think a house could have been a little bit smaller, pushed back a little bit, and fit in there, so I'm going to vote no.
Michael Ruffio?
I agree with the other board members who have approved this. I really don't... I don't see any negatives. I agree with the hardship, and I don't vote yes on this.
Michael Richmond?
So the rear yard setback is, Roger, that's good, right? Space in compliance. Yeah, right, right, okay. So, the required front yard setback is nine and a half feet? Is that what I'm reading that right?
No, I think that's what they're asking.
No, 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 the required is sixteen point seven. Right, so...
To the porch.
Right, so then, how much we have had to lop off the house to make that, to make the house...
About seven feet.
Seven feet, yeah, so now you got a thirty-three-foot long house.
Right.
So I... I think it's a hardship. It's a definite hardship. You know, all the other houses in the neighborhood have that front yard setback pretty close. I don't think it's going to stand out as anything, you know, unusual for that neighborhood. So I'm going to vote yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now we need a second motion and a second for the two variances related to the roof. It's the roofie height can only be eighteen inches, and then the dormer length is what, Roger, forty percent?
Forty percent.
Forty percent, so we'll need the motion and a second. We can put those two together.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Tom Collins?
Yeah, it's a shame we didn't pick this up in the beginning when we were first looking at it. I missed it, I wouldn't have even picked it up anyway, but I'm not opposed. I think we need to have some variety and some differences. I don't want to see every house in Margate the same. I know it gets a little bit more bulb, but like Eric said, you know, you're taking it from one side, putting it to the other. Pete, you got to, when you finish it off, if it gets approved, come up with so it's not just a plain Jane wall, something... You can do something with it, but I really don't see... It's a shame we didn't have more time. I'm sure everybody may not agree with me, but I really don't have a problem with this, so I vote in favor.
Craig Palmisano?
But we're trying to get away from the third, the upper floor, that's a solid wall. That's where we have the eve height. And I like the look of the third floors that are built in on all four sides of the roof structure. I think... I'm going to vote no, and Pete, I think you can do something up there on that third floor for us, so I'll vote no on that.
Richard Patterson?
I feel bad for you, but I have to vote no for the exact reasons Mr. Palmisano just said. Just, I feel bad because it's sprung on everybody at a late time, but, again, I just agree with Craig, I vote no.
John Pitts?
I vote no.
Jim Galantino?
I mean, he does hold it in a little bit, Craig. It's not like...
One side.
Yeah, but he's... He holds it in, and it's not perfectly flat all the way up the wall. I'm going to vote yes.
Margaret Guber Nolte?
I know we're trying to stay away from this. I think the rear elevation kind of backs up to Cedar Grove Avenue, East Mint Way. I don't think it really interferes with any neighbors or light design there, and I don't see a problem with it, I vote in favor.
Stephen Jisaki?
Let's see what Margaret says. I'll vote yes on this.
Michael Ruffio?
I agree with Mr. Palmisano, Mr. Patterson, I think something... There is something that can be done with that side, I vote no on this.
And Michael Richmond?
I know what Tom's saying about, you know, it's nice to have a little variety, and I know that is what Peter was saying, it's true that, you know, a lot of the houses, they aren't going to be game room because of the, you know, what we want the eve height, but that is what we want, the eve height, and we all agree to it, and we have to turn down the houses that didn't comply, so I'm going to have to put it down.
I got five no's, four yeses.
Yeah, that's what I have.
Do you want me to announce both parts? Well, the first part was approved with seven in favor, two opposed, and then the second part was denied with four in favor and five opposed.
All right, everybody, thank you, good night, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, enjoy your end of the year, Happy New Year. We'll regroup in January.
Lost my agenda. Okay, next case is Sharon Pomanti Donato and Julia Pomante, 403 North Vendome Avenue, block six two two, lot thirteen, located in the S forty zoning district, seeking a D variance relief for the expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming duplex use and C variance relief for front yard setback and potentially others for the construction of an elevator on an existing two-story duplex. Current on taxes, water, and sewer payments, proof of advertising and notifications have been provided. Mr. McLaren?
Mr. Chairman, board members, the report is based on the application of Sharon Pomanti Donato and Julia Pomante, 403 North Vendome Avenue, block six twenty-two, lot thirteen, located in the S forty zoning district, seeking C variance relief and D variance relief for an expansion of a non-conforming use. The background is as follows: The applicant is being offered a construction of an elevator to a non-conforming use, which is a duplex. The non-conforming duplex is being elevated to BFE plus three as per state law permits. However, the expansion of the non-conforming use triggers a use variance, and the elevator is the actual expansion of the non-conforming use. A certificate of non-conformity was never applied for, nor granted either to legalize a duplex. However, it exists today, and it existed for a long time, and it's assessed by the tax assessor as a two-unit dwelling. The property is also undersized in regard to S forty standards, let alone two-family density requirements. Zoning chart is on page two. Again, they already have approval to let the house, and it's nearing completion now. And I believe the applicant originally had the elevator on there, and I denied it before, but they wanted to get going with the house let, so that here they are again. Zoning chart is on page two. The user... The variances required in section three on page three is use, expansion of a non-conforming use, whereas detached single-family dwellings are permitted use, and a two-family structure exists, and a two-family dwelling is being slightly expanded, therefore creating the use variance. Front yard setback to the building elevator shaft, whereas the minimum required front yard setback based on the prevailing setback is fourteen point eight four feet, seven point five four feet exists, and ten point six two feet is proposed. Again, it's my belief that since the elevator shaft is proposed to be behind the existing front yard setback, that this is not a variance. Building coverage, whereas the maximum permitted building coverage on the property is forty percent, forty-one point three seven percent exists, and forty-two point five percent is proposed. And that's all due to the construction of the elevator shaft. It is an existing non-conforming building coverage. So in support of my definition, or my belief, that the front yard setback is not a variance, I have a definition of the front yard, which is the space extending full width at a lot between any building and the front lot line, measured perpendicular to the... In the building at its closest point to the front lot line. Said front yard shall not be... Shall be unoccupied and undestructive from the ground upward, except as may be permitted elsewhere in the chapter. So by definition, the front yard starts at seven point five four feet, and ten point six two feet is further back, so to me, that's not an expansion of a non-conforming setback for the front. So in essence, there are two variances, use and building coverage, and I will conclude my report at that time.
Real quick, Chris, before you get started, so this is... It's a duplex, so technically a non-conforming use, they're adding this elevator shaft, which technically requires what's called a D two variance, that's a slight expansion of the non-conforming use. Because it's a D variance, we need five out of seven votes, and the law states that the mayor's designee and Jimmy have to step down for this application, and then you can come back up right when it's out. And that'll still give us, I believe, eight members, but seven will vote.
Perfect, thank you.
Before we go further, could you just clarify to me, when you said it requires a use variance, does that mean that we're giving them a multifamily property?
No, the multifamily property already exists. It grandfathered in, it's been taxed that way forever. Typically, when you have a non-conforming use, and there's a zoning change, people will come in and get what is called a certificate of non-conformity, which legalizes the continued use of that property as is. Like, if they go to sell a property at some point in time, they should get a certificate of non-conformity, because you're selling a non-conforming use.
Is that what we're giving them tonight?
They haven't sought... They haven't requested that, no. But the variance that they're asking for tonight is expansion of a non-conforming use to allow the elevator shaft, because it's being used by two units, and it's a non-conforming use.
And if it was a single-family?
It wouldn't be a use variance.
Wouldn't be a use variance.
Correct.
So if eventually it was found that it wasn't, shouldn't be a duplex, then it still wouldn't affect the use form?
Right.
So, one more time with the variances. So the building coverage is a variance, right?
Correct.
But it's very minor, isn't it, the building coverage variance? I mean... Yeah. It's pretty minor.
The shaft's great, and one percent.
If they were steps, it wouldn't be a variance.
Right, and then... And then it's just the use variance, because they're attaching the elevator to the non- Is that what you're saying?
Right. If they were building a roof...
It's only... It's only an elevator, it's not like a unique space or anything like that.
Right.
Right. Unless you get stuck in it.
Do you agree with my front yard setback issue?
Yes.
Okay. My work's done. Chairman, board members, my name's Chris Bassett, I'm an attorney in Northfield, New Jersey, here tonight with Sharon and Julie Pomante, who are the applicants before the board tonight, together with Bill Swiderski, who's a professional planner and professional engineer with Swiderski and Associates. As we indicated, the applicants are the owners of 403 North Vendome Avenue, that's block six twenty-two, lot thirteen, rectangular-shaped property, twenty-four hundred square feet in size. It's located in the S forty zoning district, and it's at the intersection on Vendome Avenue, at the intersection with Fremont Avenue. As everybody has already discussed, this is currently used as a pre-existing non-conforming duplex structure, and we're here tonight seeking that D two variance, because the elevator shaft does in fact trigger that D two variance, because we are expanding the non-conforming structure. Yes, sir?
Is it owner-occupied?
It is.
Both?
Well, one of the two lives there year-round. The other one is there, and we can provide that testimony.
Well, that's...
Half the year.
I believe you, that's okay. Okay.
They're very often, and Sharon lives there, right? Okay. I think everybody has noted that there is ongoing construction at the property right now. That ongoing construction is the subject of prior building permits that have already been issued. Anything being constructed now is not necessarily the topic of what we're discussing tonight. All we're really discussing tonight is that elevator shaft, which I think everybody recognizes. We do need, at this point, two variances, one for an increase in building coverage, and the second for the D variance, which is the expansion of the non-conforming use. We have a couple pre-existing non-conforming conditions that we'd like to tie in and get technical approval for. All of those conditions are pre-existing, none of them are being exacerbated. Actually, one of them actually gets better with respect to the off-street parking. We'll present the testimony tonight of Mr. Swiderski, who's a professional planner and engineer with Swiderski and Associates. If needed, we have Sharon and Julia here to testify, and our witnesses will establish that we meet both, I think, the C one and C two criteria for the variance, and we are particularly suited. There's no impediment to the zoning ordinance or zone plan, nor do we have any substantial detriment. So with that, I would have everybody sworn, if you would like, Mr. Manos, at your discretion.
If you feel that your clients are going to testify, we'll get them sworn now, or if you want to wait and see if you need them.
Probably not, but up to you.
Let's get Mr. Swiderski sworn, and we'll see where it goes, and...
Sure.
Just give us... Mr. Swiderski, just give us your name and address for the record.
Okay, William S.
William S. Swiderski, 599 Shore Road, Summers Point, New Jersey. I'm a professional engineer and professional planner within the state of New Jersey. Have been practicing land use law for over 40 years, have appeared before this board.
Just get your, I'll get you sworn, and then we'll get to all that stuff. You swear the testimony you'll give this evening will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thanks.
We'll accept his qualifications.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Swiderski, you've prepared the plan, and you're familiar with the application that's on file here tonight?
Yes, I am.
And you're familiar with the site, obviously?
Yes, I am.
And the surrounding and neighboring properties?
Yes, I am.
And the zoning ordinance and master plan?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Can you describe for the board the property as it's currently configured and developed?
The property is located on Vendome Avenue. It is about 30-foot, if you want to call it, west of Fremont Avenue. To give the board a little bit of a background, the existing structure was built in approximately 1930. It was probably the first structure in that particular area. It has remained untouched since that time. What has occurred is that the applicant has obtained a grant to allow the raising of the structure, because it is a duplex, it is a ground-floor structure, and there's a first-floor structure. They have a grant that allows them to raise the structure, so that we will eliminate the ground floor, adding a second floor above the existing first floor. This would allow us to use the first floor as a garage area. What has occurred is because of this, we need access, and because one of our applicants is handicapped, we are seeking a variance for an addition of a 30 or 5-foot by 6-foot structure, which would encompass an elevator off the side of the house. Previously, because there was a unit on the first floor, we did need access, I mean, it provided handicap access. Now that we're adding a second floor, we need access to that second floor. That is the need for the structure. In terms of the use variance, what we are proposing, again, is a 5-foot by 6-foot structure off the side of the existing structure. This encompasses like 2.5% increase in the total building area of the structure. This is very, very small in size. In terms of the D-variants, we feel that it will promote the public health, because if we didn't have an elevator, we would have to put some sort of a ramp at the site, and that would cause, I think, a burden on everyone because of the size and location that would be required to build a ramp to the first floor and to the second floor. I also feel that we will promote the environmental or the visual environment. Again, the choice is either an elevator or we have to provide some sort of a ramp. We have a very limited area, as you can see from the sightline that we provided. The existing lot width is 30-foot. To get a ramp to the second, to the first floor would require an additional amount of land, which would be very obnoxious, and in my professional opinion, I don't think it would add to the environment. Well, if we just put a little 30-foot addition, or very square-foot addition, out of the building to provide an elevator, I think it would enhance the aspects of the site.
Very good, thank you. Bill, with respect to the surrounding neighborhood, this is completely residential in nature, correct?
Yes.
And is this site suitable for continued residential use, in your opinion?
Yes, it is.
So the site is particularly suited for continued residential use?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. You spoke as to the size of the lot, in terms of frontage and depth. Do you think we satisfy the hardship criteria under C1 for the variances being requested? In terms of the fact that the lot is small, there's no additional land on either side, everything's fully developed?
Yes, I do.
Can you think of a better or more suitable use, other than residential in this area?
No, there is none.
Okay. You covered most of it. In your opinion, does this satisfy the purpose of zoning, that it's an appropriate location for residential use?
It's an appropriate location, plus, again, what we're doing is we're adding a very small building area, and in fact, it will not protrude beyond the existing frontage of the building. So in terms of a visual aspect, you're not going to be able to see it, it's just going to be part of it. Plus, I think it adds to, enhances the look of the building.
The other criteria that we have to satisfy is that there's no negative criteria. In your opinion, do we satisfy that negative criteria?
Yes, because, again, it's a diminutive addition to the total building area. We're not adding, it's a little over 2% of building area, and it's just appropriate.
Okay. Any substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan or zoning ordinance, in your opinion?
No.
And is there any substantial impairment to the public good?
No, there is not.
In fact, I think it's your testimony that this will be a benefit to the public good by eliminating living space on that grade elevation, moving everything up in compliance with the flood regulations, right?
It will enhance the fact that, you know, there has been recorded flooding of the first floor. So by moving and elevating the structure, we're eliminating that. Plus, I have to add that it also enhances the environment in that it provides storage on the ground floor, so that there are presently two sheds in the back area that we are going to eliminate and be able to use that area underneath for storage, so we can eliminate that. We're actually going to decrease the amount of impervious cover by virtue of the fact that we're eliminating the rear paved area or concrete area plus two sheds, because we have it in there. But in order to do that, we need some way to access the first and second floor, and that is the reason for the elevator.
Our impervious coverage goes down as a result of this.
Yes.
Can you speak about the parking? I don't think we've touched on that yet.
We haven't touched on that. Presently, again, the first floor is occupied, there is no parking. What the proposed plan is for us to add the second floor, which frees the whole ground level, we will have parking for two spaces inside the building. So whereas there presently is no off-street parking, there will be two off-street parking spaces provided as part of this, you know, general modifications that we're doing.
So that deficiency that we currently have gets better, but is still not quite compliant with the three-space requirement that we're requiring.
That's correct.
But we now increase a zero to a two, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
And can I add the fact that, so the board knows what occurred, the applicant is under a time constraint. She does have an application in for funding to allow her to raise the building, and because of that time constraint, one of the reasons that we bifurcated this particular application, we had to get the building under construction and move ahead with the addition of the second floor. So the, under, you know, my recommendation, it was, let's get the building done, because we can do that right away and go to the board and seek your approval for a variance for the addition of the elevator area.
And speaking with the contractor, that actually makes things a little more difficult in terms of he now has to sort of open up areas, but it's doable, correct?
That's correct.
And the applicants are willing to do that?
Yes.
Okay. I don't think I have anything further for Mr. Swiderski.
I have one question. There's an existing curb cut where the elevator is going, and that'll be removed, and you're going to put a new curb cut where the garage door is being placed?
That's correct.
Right, okay. Well, that's an old, that was an old driveway to begin with, a 15-foot, which was non-conforming, and that's where the elevator is going. And there's a curb cut in front of that, so you're going to eliminate that.
And just to add, that area is presently paved, so we're not increasing any impervious area. So it is concrete, we're just replacing it with a building area.
And Bill, just on a technical note, there are other pre-existing non-conforming conditions. You've testified to the various legal reasons why the D-variants that we're requesting and the C-variants that we're requesting are justified in terms of positive and negative criteria. Do you justify the other pre-existing non-conforming conditions on the same basis or same opinion?
The same opinion, yes, sir.
All right. And Mr. Manis, I don't know if you view the technical C-variants as for the existing non-conforming conditions as subsumed into the D, but if you don't, then we've provided that testimony as well.
That's fine. I mean, you're not expanding any of the lot area, lot width, the side yards, the front yard. Coverage is getting better, parking's getting better. I'll note, if you're approved, I'll note them one way or another, but I don't know.
Very good. Bill, anything else for the good of the order?
No.
That's all I have.
You'll comply with all the landscape requirements?
Yes. Bill, can you speak to landscaping? I think the requirement in Roger's letter was to provide a landscape plan and submit that with a compliance set of plans, is that...
We will provide that.
Any issues with anything else in Roger's letter?
No.
All right, we agree with that?
Yes.
Thank you.
And we typically, for a house lift where they have grant money, we work with the applicant, where you don't, you give me a letter, if you can't complete the landscaping in time, we know that you need the money from the government to pay for this. So we will work with you on that.
Thank you.
And it, there's no governor strip now, that would be part of the landscaping.
You say that?
Okay.
What we can provide is, we can provide a limited area for grass strip in that area.
One street tree.
I'm sorry?
One street tree.
One street tree? That'll be, one street tree will be part of your landscape plan?
One street tree. It's supposed to be two, but that's all you got room for.
One more question. Did you say the old driveway, is that going to be concrete taken out of there?
Yes. We will reconstruct the curb cut so that it...
I'm talking about where the elevator is, around the elevator also.
Yes. We'll take that out and then remove it, or relocate it, really.
I have nothing further.
Anything else on the board? Anyone from the public here have any questions, comments? State your name and address, and then wait to be sworn in before you say anything.
Louis Marone, 405 North Vendome, full-time resident at the location.
Stop. Okay. Mr. Marone, please raise your right hand. You swear if I'm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. I'm the neighbor facing the house to the left. Sharon's been a good neighbor, we've been good neighbors to her. For instance, she only has two-feet side setback to our property line. When I built my house three years ago, I did an extra two feet on that side setback, just to maybe accommodate a little more, give us a little more space. When I put my fence up, I came off the property line. We all know how important property is down here. I came about eight or nine inches off the property line to allow them sufficient space to get through to their backyard. I didn't even tell them I did that. I just did that to be neighborly. And I'm not going to oppose this request strenuously. Number one, I wish it would have been handled before the project was six or eight months into it. I wish I would have been consulted about it by her, or at least told it was happening before I got the certified letter. That got me a little upset, it was my first notice. As far as the gentleman's comment, it'll make the aesthetics of the neighborhood, I don't believe that at all. I sit to the right of her, I have an 18-foot setback in the front, didn't request any variance. I have a deck above, I'll be looking out on that. I guess I'll have to live with it, if it's the board's decision. And again, I'm not opposing this strenuously, I just want to put on the record some of my concerns. This has been very upsetting to me and my wife for the past week or so.
You realize the notice is just for the variance, they didn't need any notices to do what they were doing?
Understood.
Okay.
That's what I'm talking about, the tower going up, the three-story elevator shaft that's going up.
Right. Until they applied for that, they didn't need to notify anybody. I mean, as a neighbor, they...
I know they didn't.
You should have talked to them.
But I'm saying is, maybe if we had a little communication, it would have made it a little easier.
Okay. I understand.
And that didn't happen, you know? And I'm not going to say anything more negative about the property. I mean, the parking, yeah, the comment was that it was more aesthetic, that there's more parking there. They eliminated the one parking spot where the elevator is going to be. That's where they parked. I lived there for 20 years.
No, 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 but they're adding two spaces.
Yeah.
Right.
And eliminating that one.
Right.
And the driveway, from a concern, and I don't know there's anything that can be done about it, I spoke to Roger today about it, from the garage door to the pavement is seven foot. Now, I was told that that's consistent. I have serious concerns about that, about the safety of my grandkid going out there, and the cars backing out from a point-to-point driveway onto the pavement before the driver's out of the garage. If that's the way it is, that's the way it is. If it's conforming, it's conforming. But it certainly concerns me that you can't see right or left, because you're not out of the garage, and your vehicle is already on the pavement and across the apron. So, you know, this is all just things that have built up, and I'm speaking out, I'm probably saying too much.
Right. You brought something to my attention. Is that all?
Yeah. And I wish them the best. I mean, it's going to be hard to repair any relationship that we had in the past, but it's so bad.
Could you address that, please, for the board?
Sure. The time of application was in April. The ordinance that was written under parking says, if you have a garage parking space and you have a parking space in the driveway, it has to be 18 feet. They didn't count the driveway as a parking space. Technical reading of how the ordinance is written, so that's why this past summer, we clarified that ordinance to, any garage door has to be 18 feet away from the property line, because of the annoyance how that ordinance is written. So they got in before that ordinance was changed.
Okay.
That's what happened. And plus, it was an existing non-conforming structure, and it's a lift.
But there wasn't a garage there. But it doesn't matter, they got in before.
Right. Technically, you know, the idea is to, any garage, you need 18 feet, but it says if you're counting that as a parking space. And they weren't counting it as a parking space.
But the bottom line is that all this, what we just talked about, is nothing to do with what we're talking about now.
Right.
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 And the other thing is that I understand what the neighbor's saying, but I've also, as a builder, been involved in house lifts with grants, and I know how the state works. And, you know, there is a timeline. So if they would have waited, I know what you're saying, but I think that a little bit of the reason maybe that they, you know, that it didn't come up was because they had to start the project at a certain time, because if you don't get it done by a certain time, then you don't get the money. And to elevate a house, especially in that, you know, to be flood-proof or whatever you want to call it, I think is a good thing. That's my opinion.
Just to clarify...
And every house has elevators, because, you know, every house has got to be nine, 10 feet up in the air.
Just to clarify what you said about the garage being there, under the new rules, they couldn't do that. But they did it before the rules changed. So that's...
Yeah, yeah. You know, the elevator, I'm glad they have an elevator. I think that's a good idea. It could have been put inside the house, and there'd be no need for a variance.
Anyone else in the audience have any questions, comments? Public portion's closed. Nothing else on the board, Leo, if you could read a motion?
Sure. One additional item, is if they go to sell the house, would you come in for a CNC?
Is if they go to sell the house, would you come in for a CNC? Certificate and icon for me.
Okay. Would they do that now and then just have it on record? Not, not tonight. I mean, they don't have to wait till they sell the house to do that?
They can come back anytime.
That's what I mean. I mean, that seems to be something you should do.
Right.
Sure, I like seeing you guys.
I don't think you come before us. Oh, no, forget it.
Within one year, if there is zoning changes done, they have one year to, I can issue a CNC, but this has been more than one year.
Okay.
All right, so I, I'll just note, there are some existing non-conformities that they're either making better or staying the same. I'll note them if approved, you know, the lot area's deficient, lot width's deficient, front yard setback to the house, side yard setback on the left, the combined side yard setback, coverages are, and parking, which I guess the parking's being made, made better. Some of the coverages are being made better, but the, the two new variances are what's called the D-two variance, because by putting this elevator shaft in, that's technically they're expanding the non-conforming duplex, so that's the D-two variance. And then, building coverage, forty percent's the requirement. They're at forty-one point three seven percent, and they're going up to forty-two and a half percent. So, those are the two variances. The conditions, I'll, I'll note anything in Mr. McClellan's report, any representations made by the applicant, but also, subject any outside approvals. You have to submit that non-conversion agreement that, that everyone has to do with when they lift the structure. The two ones I'll specifically note, or they'll comply with the landscaping, they'll submit a landscaping plan to Mr. McClellan and be reviewed and approved in his discretion. It'll include a governor's strip and one street tree. And then, uh, prior to selling the home, they'll, uh, apply for a certificate of non-conformity.
Or sooner?
Or sooner.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Tom Collins?
Normally, in, uh, situations where we're trying to expand a non-conforming use, I really just don't see where we should be able to, where we should do that in Margate. We wanna bring people more into conformance and not into conformance. In this case, uh, I can make an exception because of the ADA and the elevator. It's actually very de minimis. I know it's a D-two, but, um, I think the attributes are gonna outweigh the detriments. I think it does meet the C-one and C-two, definitely meets the hardship. And the fact that we're getting rid of more non-flood compliant is a betterment to the city. And the fact that we're taking, it's a beautiful neighborhood, and by fixing up and remodeling and, and bringing your house to today's standards, I think you're gonna benefit the neighborhood. Whether everybody agrees or not, that's up to them, but, uh, I give you a lot of credit for doing what you're doing, and I vote in favor.
Craig Palmasano?
Yes, you have a eighty or ninety-year-old home, and you're, you've taken, taken the ground floor out of there and made it flood compliant. You're adding two parking spaces under there, for each, one for each duplex, one for each unit. And, um, you're removing sheds in the backyard for more landscaping coverage. Um, the old driveway was only fifteen foot long, so that was not a non-conforming driveway. But, uh, you, I've seen the house, and, um, you've, um, it's gonna be a big improvement. I don't know, I always like to see a structure rehabilitated instead of torn down and a new structure going up. I approve what you're doing.
Richard Patterson?
If I understand it, uh, the, the neighbor's concerns properly, I, I don't know if I do or not, but if I do, I think it would be the same problems whether we were putting in an elevator or not. I think it's the fact of the house lift. But, this elevator, it, it, I agree with Tom, we don't wanna increase, uh, a non-conforming use, but it's caused by this five-by-five elevator that's actually tucked into a corner. It's not sticking out of the side of the house or the back of the house, it's, it's pretty well hidden. So, um, and I know we approve variances for the property, not for the, um, person living there. So, it's not necessary to have an elevator, even though the person needs one, but it looks to me like there's no way in hell that you could put a ramp in there. I, I just don't see that elevator affecting anything in the neighborhood, and I approve the application.
Margaret Gubernalti?
I agree with Mr. Palmasano, um, in that we're getting an elevated property, we're getting better coverage, we're improving our parking. It's a slight expansion, the building coverage is de minimis. I don't see any negative impact to our zoning ordinance, um, and I vote in favor of the application.
Stephen Giacchetti?
Uh, yes, um, I have to agree with every, uh, with the other board members. We are getting a flood compliant house, we're getting a couple cars off the street. I see this as a substantial benefit for the community, so I vote yes.
Michael Rafiu?
I understand the, the circumstances make the, make the elevator necessary, and you made it work. I think you have made it work with some, with actually some improvements. I don't see any negatives that would, that would warrant a denial, so I vote yes.
Michael Richmond?
I understand that a D variance is a big deal, but it's not like they're trying to get an extra bedroom or extra living space, you know, they're, they're putting an elevator in, and, you know. Like someone else said, I, I don't know even how you would do a ramp there. And I, I'm pretty sure that if they tried to do a ramp there, Roger, that they could, they're allowed to go out to the property line? Is, is that like a...
It'd be a landscape coverage issue, but...
Right, so, I think this is a much better solution, and, uh, yes.
The application is approved with seven in favor and zero opposed.
But, can I, before you've done, can I make one comment? If they hadn't had their application in, in time, I would have voted against this for the exact reason the neighbor pointed out, that they're backing out of a garage, not even seeing who's coming down the sidewalk. But I fully support it because they did have it in time and were following the law, but, uh, I just wanted that on the record.
Thank you, we appreciate that. Everybody have a great holiday, appreciate your time.
Joe and Jim, were you guys here at the beginning? Oh, Roberts isn't gonna get heard tonight, did you know that? It's next month. I saw you sitting there and I, I... So, I mean, hang out, hang out if you want, but... Hang out if you want, but, uh... They requested it to be, to be bumped another, till, till January. Not yet.
Next case is Richard and Jody Gordoweski, eighty-one oh seven Atlantic Avenue, block one oh nine point zero two, lot one, located in the S-twenty-five zoning district, seeking C variance relief. Can you take it outside, please? Seeking C variance relief for building coverage, top floor decks, elevator rear setback, and potentially others to elevate, elevate a single-family home. They are current on taxes, water, and sewer payments, and proof of advertising and notifications have been provided. Mr. McClellan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. The report is based on the application. Richard and Jody Gordeski, eight one zero seven Atlantic Avenue, block one zero nine point zero two, lot one, located in the S-twenty-five zoning district. Seeking C variances, the background is as follows, the applicant is seeking relief in order to elevate and modify an existing two-and-a-half-story, single-family dwelling on the corner of Atlantic Avenue, and it's... Since the dwelling is exceeding BFE plus three, all existing non-conforming issues become variances. However, the addition is creating some variances as well. And this is a revised report, they, as you're aware, they came in a November meeting, and we discussed and advised them to come back with some minor revisions, which they did. So, this is not a hardship variance, it's a substantial benefit variance. It could be deemed somewhat of a hardship because it is a corner property, you have two front yards to deal with and two side yards. Zoning chart is on page two, and continue on page three, as long as, as well as the plans received and the table documents reviewed and including the cover letters from Mr. Swift. Variance is required as follows, garage door setback, here we go again. Whereas if parking is provided below residence, a minimum setback of eighteen feet is required no matter if a parking space is intended or not, and eight point three three feet is proposed. And that's a result of the ordinance change in July. Third-floor decks location, whereas a third-floor deck non-beach block and non-waterfront shall face the street, and one is proposed facing the side of the house. It is kinda facing the street, too. I'll, I'll leave that to the board's discretion if, if that meets the criteria of being on a street. Third-floor deck size, whereas a third-floor deck non-beach block or non-waterfront shall be no larger than fifty percent of the deck below, or one-third of the width of the facade of a deck is not present, and neither criterion is being met. Third-floor deck railings, whereas a third-floor deck non-beach block is not to be extended above the roof line on a gable end. Both sides extend above the roof line. Again, that's, that's confirmed that. And the railings are supposed to be part above a pent roof to disguise the deck. I'm not gonna go through all my comments, I believe the applicant has reviewed this. I'll turn it over to Mr. Swift, Terry Cummings.
Thank you, uh, Mr. McClellan, Mr. Chairman, Madam Secretary, board members. My name is James Swift, one three three five Hilton Road, Northfield, New Jersey, appearing today on behalf of Richard and Jody Gordeski. We have Mr. Gordeski, the property owner, we also have our architect, Terry Cummings, who's here. If Mr. Mattis thinks it's appropriate, if you swear the witness is in at this point, or however you want to...
Sure, uh, if they're both gonna speak, they can each just state their name and address or business address, and I'll swear both in together.
Terry Cummings, one oh two Arboret Court West in Glenwood.
Richard Gordeski, eighty-one oh seven Atlantic Avenue.
Okay, and if you can each please raise your right hand, each swear affirm the testimony you'll give this evening will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Mattis, can I throw up Mrs. Cummings to be qualified as an expert before this board?
Yeah, we accept her qualifications, yes.
Thank you very much, and thank you for hearing us. Eighty-one oh seven, uh, Atlantic is a largely compliant property. We do need a, a couple variances, as Mr. McClellan pointed out. I would respectfully request, and I know this is gonna come up because the whole garage door thing is, you know, it, it's an issue. But if you take a look at Haberford Avenue, if you're standing in front of the property, and if you look to the road... Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
What street are we standing on?
If, if you're standing on Atlantic...
On Atlantic.
And basically standing right in front of the property, and if we look at, um, Haberford Avenue will be on the right. Presently would exist, is basically a, it, it's a, a flat wall with nothing really there. The setback, the way that wall is, is, is eight feet, two inches. In essence, we're not gonna expand that setback, but we're gonna respectfully request is that, in, as part of a comprehensive lift of the property, because I should have pointed this earlier, it is not flood compliant presently. So, if the board acts favorably upon this, we are gonna lift the property up, it's gonna be flood compliant. What would this would do is allow us to park one car underneath the house. In addition, it would give the Gordeskis significant amount of storage for, um, beach equipment, anything you wanna put on there, but presently, it's not flood compliant. It would take a car that would be, you know, it would potentially be off the streets, would be under the house. In addition, we would have the parking in the rear of the property. What, the good part of this, and what Terry has done here, if the board approves that, we'd have a car, an additional car underneath the house, and we would not leave, lose no off-street parking. Have meaningless effect on off-street parking. Also, too, what we presently have in the property is really no meaningful outside space. The, the way the design is gonna be, it would, um, allow the Gordeskis to have a little bit of outside space, use the outside, a little, presently it doesn't exist. In addition, uh, as Mr. McClellan had pointed out, this is not our first rendition of the, of the application. We were here in November, Mr. McClellan had some recommendations, some requests that, uh, were to be made. We took those recommendations seriously, we modified the plans. Additionally, we had, uh, we were gonna seek two, uh, third-floor decks, now we're simply seeking one. I would respectfully submit that, consistent with the neighborhood pattern that's going on there, there are ten properties, and I can list, and the board wants to, I can go through addresses one by one. There are ten properties within basically a baseball throw of this particular property that also have third-floor decks. So, we took Mr. McClellan's, uh, requests into consideration. We took away one deck, we're, instead of asking for two, we're asking for one. Under all the considerations, I, I think it's not a, you know, it's, it's not an overreaching request. I think it's somewhat modest, uh, and again, we did scale it back somewhat. We've tried to take into consideration any impact, which we don't think there will be, and any of the neighbors. In addition, one of our neighbors across the street, as the board is aware, is the library. So, presently, it's a two, two-story property, as the board is aware, in the library, in the summer, they have a tent out there. What that does is, de facto, the Gordeskis have never complained, or they've been very good neighbors with the libraries, what, the third-floor deck would simply allow them to look over that library tent and get ocean views. And as part of a comprehensive upgrade of this property, what the Gordeskis, this is their personal situation, they're transitioning more from Philadelphia to the shore. So, what this application would do is allow them to have an elevator. They have some elderly, elderly members of the family that obviously the elevator would help, but it would, in essence, be an overall modification of a very beautiful house. Make it more beautiful, make it flood compliant, in addition, have an elevator, and Rich isn't getting any younger. I know he rose a lot, but, you know, he's physically fit, but at this point, it would be a more of a full-time property as opposed to their, their Philadelphia property. Again, this is not our first rendition, we talked the comments and the considerations. This is what we've come up with, we respectfully hope that the board makes a finding that this is, uh, an application that should get the C variance request, and it's not a hardship, but we were proceeding under forty, code fifty-five, uh, seven D, that the benefit clearly outweighs any negative. We don't think there is any negative. And obviously flood compliant, and, and we think it's a nice property. So, at this point in time, can I call our architect? She can, uh, describe some of the technical aspects of the application.
To explain a little bit, on, capitalize on what, uh, Mr. Swift just told you. The house itself right now is non-flood compliant, below the flood plain. Some of the other issues with the house is it has absolutely no outdoor space for Rich and Jody to use. The side yard is filled with AC units and the shower and the other utilities. They have a small shed in the back existing that is way undersized for their needs, for their bikes and their beach chairs and their outdoor furniture. And right now, the three spaces in the back line up in a very, very, very narrow space where they can barely get the doors open. So, our proposal was to do this. First and foremost, raise the house to meet flood compliance, bring it up. Because of the nature of the structure of the house, we can now put two cars underneath. That, of course, would be our first choice, but the entire house is held up by a structural wall that's in the way, and it would just be cost prohibitive, it wouldn't make any sense. So, to get around that, what we came up with are two spaces where they exist today, widen the driveway curb cut to the eighteen feet, putting one car underneath the house. What that allows us to do is use the rest of this grade floor unfinished for storage, and to take all the utilities that now sit in the left yard here and bring them behind where the old space was. So, we're getting all the utilities away from the side yard, making a nice new patio so they can have some outdoor, uh, yard space. And then what we're doing is we're opening up this unfinished, never-to-be-finished space just for additional storage, for shade, uh, it's south-facing, and they'll be able to get, um, some shade under here, maybe put a ping-pong table in there we're talking about. It would be unfinished, no heat, no air, and they'd be happy to sign something that says that. Just more living space down on the grade floor. It would be unfinished, no heat, no air, they'd be happy to sign something that says that, just more living space down on the grade floor.
Excuse me, is that open walls?
It's open, possible with glass doors or just open, that.
So it's not open wall, you, you like doors.
It can't be all open, again, structural reasons make me keep those openings to no more than six feet, for structural purposes. We have opened up, suggested that we bring the front wall, which is under an existing deck that is going to be raised when the whole house gets raised, just to add a little bit more space, because as Rich told me, space is at a premium and any inches you can get us would be greatly appreciated. But we did keep the wall back from the front wall of the house. It doesn't infringe upon the lock coverage or the building coverage that stays within the allowable, but just gives them a little bit more space in this area. And now to get to the new raised first floor and, and first floor entry, we've added a new stair that brings you up to the front deck. And you can see the stair right here. The rest of this house is exactly the same, just raised. Nothing else except for this small third floor deck. We've added stairs and the elevator because, as we said, they're going to make this the retirement home. And with the house being raised, it would be, it's necessary to have the elevator. It's not, again, infringing on anything, and because it's an existing home, there's only one place the elevator works, right here. And it will work on the grade floor, it goes into a laundry room on the first floor, which can be refit for it. It literally opens into the living room, I can't be helped, on the next floor. And up above, we took one of the bedrooms that are up here, converted it to a lounge. And the elevator and stairs both open up to this open space and gives you access to the new deck. As you can see, I added a little pent roof along this facade, hoping to make the board's approval that that roof now looks a little bit more continuous. We can't do it on the side because it's such a narrow deck to begin with, we don't have any space to give up. And the only reason that the deck is a little bit bigger than is normally permitted is because of the shape of the house and the headroom, the only place we can access that deck is from the dead center under this ridge. Let me show you. This drawn here. That when you come up into the new lounge, that was once a bedroom, you have stairs and an elevator and the door out is right directly under the ridge, everything else is down at the four foot, five foot plate height. So there isn't any room for the door, it has to sit that far back. And there is our new deck, sitting right there. As, as Mr. Swift mentioned, in the summer, there's usually a tent out in front by the library. And their view is significantly impacted by, by where they're located, by raising the house up and adding that third floor deck. They will get a lot more ocean view and a lot more use of their outside space.
Can I ask just a quick question, Howard? The proposed application that you, I mean, the plans that you made, does not significantly increase the footprint of the property?
Not at all.
And the deck on the third floor is actually within that whole footprint, right?
Yes, it is. Yes, it's, it's inside the footprint of the house.
And having the mechanicals taken presently from the outside and put it inside is obviously going to be helpful in terms of less noise, less impact on the neighborhood.
Yeah, and in fact, that does, I want to mention, the reason we are putting the third floor deck on this side of the house rather than on the corner side is intentional because down below is the master bedroom. And there are no windows, master bathroom, excuse me, and it only has skylights. And if we were to change the roof line here, we would have to remove the skylights, the master bath would be dark. In addition, there's some significant HVAC that takes place on this side of the house, which would be, again, cost prohibitive to try to change or move. And here, again, is the best ocean view and we feel that it is front-facing, front of the house, ocean-facing and that we're able to access the elevator and the lounge so that everybody can enjoy a third floor deck. Which is why we have chosen to ask permission to put it on that side of the house.
Terry, on the first floor, you have the two bedrooms and then you're showing, it says new bedroom?
Yes, we, there's a little den right now that exists. And what we did, because we took this bedroom away to maintain the same number of bedrooms, we turned that den into a little bedroom by adding a little closet to it, that's the only change. It's not a decrease in bedrooms, the same number of bedrooms, we just relocated it downstairs.
There is always five bedrooms?
Yes, always.
And, I mean, so, there was a third parking spot in the back of the house?
Yes, originally there were three lined up, one behind the other, we've moved one of them under the house.
Terry, is, there's no room to put an eve on the Longport side of that deck?
No. The deck is only seven foot, ten inches wide.
No, no, I'm not saying that, I'm saying leave the deck where it is, there's no room for an eve off of that deck to extend towards Longport to put a pent roof there?
I, I guess we could. I think the problem was, looking at it, was it going over into the side yard? But if it's, you mean, just bring the pent roof out and hang it from there, like that?
Well, as you're aware, I know we went through this on Thurlow Avenue with you, when we approved decks only in the front and we said, you can come in for a rear deck or this, this is the same thing, it's not in the front, but you must comply with what the rules are and I would rather see, I don't know if that would require a variance if you put a pent roof there and left the deck the same way. I understand that you can't make it smaller.
I, structurally, I have to look at it, but yeah, we could, we could, we could do that, I can figure that.
And that would get rid of that part of the variance that you have to gate right, right at the edge.
Oh, okay, sure, I, I think that I read the, the code a little differently, that it would have to come in from that point. But you're saying we can bring it out.
If you could have that, you have a pent roof on the front, bring that around.
Yeah, we can do that.
And that eliminates that variance, doesn't it? Roger?
That's still a variance.
Just that one corner? That little triangle there?
Yeah, that's why I did do that.
But that's a big improvement, right?
Terry, if you look at A two.
So that, oh, excuse me, wait, on that same point, so the variance would be reduced for that little triangle that sticks up above the roof line?
No, you're not looking at that, Rich.
I'd have to bring the whole thing in all the way along the depth of, I tried doing that, I tried to put a little corner and wrap it.
I'm not saying bring the deck in, I'm saying you have that pent roof around the front.
You just said it wouldn't make a difference.
Why not?
Well, it'd still be a variance, but it'd be a much, much, much.
Your only variance is that little corner up on the top.
If we are saying we can extend the overhang of this and bring it back to here and wrap it around the house, yes, I can do that.
And you still have a variance. Come up here, come up here. Please. Instead of this being your variance, this is your variance.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah. Right.
This is the variance instead of this being the variance.
Can you move this back three feet so that railing is three feet high?
You can't, your railing, your roof will be so high, you won't be able to see over it, that's the problem.
But this is the only spot.
Yeah.
I mean, I want to be clear that we're on the same page.
I can add a pent roof there.
Right.
And that will get rid of, that will be fine.
And then you now have this little variance here instead of this whole side variance. And it puts us in a position that we are sticking to our non-front decks.
Got it, okay, yeah. Understood.
And that one railing comes back onto the roof on the angle? Right here, this comes back on, that railing piece comes on the roof?
No, it's still going to stick out.
No, no, this stays there, Craig, that's still a variance.
This is Atlantic Avenue.
I, I know.
I had tried to make it work and I couldn't get it to work. Yeah, but then it'll just be that little corner rather than the whole side.
If it came back three feet, I'm talking about the railing being.
Understand that.
Three feet tall.
Then you're five feet away from Atlantic Avenue.
I know, I know, but then the roof.
Okay. Got it. Fifty percent, isn't it?
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds.
Well, you have, she has three feet, three feet's mandatory, what's the height have to be of the railing?
Three feet, the height of railing has to be three feet over the walking surface.
Right.
So the pent roof has to come up two feet.
Right.
And is the pent roof on the Atlantic Avenue side two feet high?
She will, she'll make it two feet high.
Yeah, approximately, but I can make it, be sure it's two feet high.
Then you can, then you conform and you have that one corner is, is your new variance.
Okay.
Yeah, we know, it looks like it's about, it's less. Is the.
I think we need to talk about the driveway more.
Well, we haven't, yeah, go ahead. Is, is the elevator rear setback still a variance or not?
No, minimum side yard setback, that's a side yard, not a rear yard.
Oh, right, right. All right, go ahead.
What can we do about, given us eighteen feet from the property line? It would have to be a garage door inside and it would be an outside piece of parking space, wouldn't it? If you pulled in and you hit a, hit a wall that was in eighteen feet.
We don't have a spot that will fit a car. But if we, I mean, if we let the door off.
Yes.
And had no garage door and just parked the car under the house.
That's, that's.
It's the same situation.
No, you'd need thirty-six feet from the property line, from the property line to your wall, you'd need two parking spaces there. You don't have thirty-six feet.
The house does not have that much, that's why we only have eight foot three.
From the property line, you don't have thirty-six feet to the.
No, we don't. We have, the stairway is right here, we have, we have the eighteen feet we need for the car and then we have the eight foot three plus the width of the wall.
So that parking space is as far back as you can go.
Yes, it is.
That would be a hardship.
Terry.
Well, go ahead, go ahead.
Rich, just real quick, Terry, looking at the plan, the hardship is created because you're lining the stair up in a zigzag right under the other stair. And then you have a storage room in front, you could actually take the stairway, move it back and have it as a straight run up. And then connect the other stairs. And then you have room where you could pull the car underneath of it and then you could recess the garage door and then you'd have more room. So it is possible.
You're suggesting parking the car underneath the stairs themselves?
Well, you're just going to move them, you're doing it like this, up and down.
You still need the headroom at the top of the stairs.
You have enough room to go from the front of the house, straight up and into the second floor stair. And all your support wall, you were saying about support walls, but look, you're putting in all new steel beams.
There's a, there's a full floor above this, you would not have the headroom upstairs, which is the foyer for the first, for the next floor. You don't have the headroom above the stairs.
So, just a general question, if you didn't put a garage door on there, would it, would it be a variance? You just had it as open parking and then.
Yeah, it would be.
It would still be a variance?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because from that edge of the house, it's not the door, it's, the car, the spot goes to the garage door.
Right, okay.
I think, I think it's important to note though, in this particular case, I understand about the code of not, nobody's going to park here, we have ours required, there isn't room to put a car. And the fact that when they do pull out, because I, I heard the safety issue mentioned before, you have full look up, there's nothing blocking, we're on a corner, there's not even any parking here. Because they'll be able to pull out slowly and look both ways, it's not the same condition as your last case where it's, it's a safety issue in any way.
I have to call Bullfeathers on that one. What happens is, well, I won't, I would, but I shouldn't. You got the summer and all the parking spots are taken and people pull in and park, blocking the sidewalk, sometimes taking out on the street. The cops can come and arrest you or whatever they do, it's illegal, but it happens. And it's, it's that aspect, and again, I believe the safety aspect with six feet there to the, you have eight feet, but you have six feet, but you only have six feet to the sidewalk. This is unusual where the property line is in the sidewalk rather than in the grass. And as he's backing out, he can't see until he's more than six feet, six feet out.
I think Rich has a few things he might want to address about his issue today with pulling out and people parking.
And to say, I wouldn't do that, this is not our job to take your word that you won't do that.
There is an, there is an existing driveway there now. I don't know if that's any different than the car being in the garage right next to the existing driveway.
You've got an existing driveway with full open space around it.
Not, there is not full open space, there's, there's a house next to it, one, one to the side. This is the existing driveway, there's a building here.
So you have the same.
It's the same, it's the same thing. And there's also, we don't have the plan of this property, but there's a building on this side. So the only difference is the presence of a door. I don't see the difference.
Look, you're, you're stuck with the house that you have, I mean, I understand it creates problems, but this is the house you have. And we have been adamant on that driveway since the law passed, in fact, we were adamant before and we, we got the law passed that people will park in that driveway and backing out, not seeing. I don't see it the same as the open driveway, maybe on one side, not the other side, but.
Rich, I think.
And if you, and what you, happens is if you can't do that, then you can't put the elevator in because that's where the third parking space is, you, then you need a parking variance for two spots instead of three spots. I understand that, I understand it being a hardship, but I'm having a hard time overcoming the two detriments of that outside space in front of the garage and backing out of that garage. I don't see an answer to it, is what I'm saying, but that wouldn't change my vote that I can't figure out how you can do it.
Or you eliminate one of the bedrooms. Then you have just four bedrooms and then you get everything you want.
Then you get two spaces?
Yeah. Is that right, Roger? Four bedrooms?
Yes.
Four bedrooms, two spaces.
How do they do that? That would be another variance because they're going higher than, are they going higher than we're seeing?
If we change the design and keep the den, we'll be too smart.
Yeah, that's why I'm here.
Because you really wanted to be able to park the car in the garage.
Right, but they can only do that, it's, if they. If they park underneath. Oh, no, I, I understand, I'm sorry, I withdraw my questioning.
Yeah, that's a good, so Roger, if you, let's say you raise the, you don't necessarily have to put a garage there, right? You don't have to put parking under there?
No.
We give you nine feet if you're.
If you're putting, yes, we allow the extra if you're putting.
Right, right, right.
But we could give a variance for that.
Right.
Roger, I have one question. The eighteen foot parking space where there's double parking, it's, it's eighteen foot, but it's in the middle of the sidewalk.
I'm looking at that too.
So how can that be a legitimate space if it's eighteen feet and it's sticking in the sidewalk?
But isn't it their property?
So in other words, the, the elevator needs to move back a couple of feet.
That's an existing condition though, that's exactly how the parking is now.
Yeah.
Or move the sidewalk, is it?
You know, I think, I think if we stop and think and remember why we created the elevation, the extra height and the parking underneath was to give us, to eliminate driveways, give us more air, open space and greener. Here, we're not eliminating any driveways, we're not getting any more green space and we're trying to put a space underneath that, you know, fly.
I'm sorry, I missed the last part, say that again.
So we're not getting what the intent of the raising more than. It was, if you're going to park underneath, you put all your parking underneath and contain it, not next to the house. So, and then, are we doing another curb cut, so is this going to be?
Yeah.
It's way above the curb, is there a variance to that?
What?
The curb cut.
Taking what, eighteen?
Total?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a skinny driveway, so they're just extending that, so it would be eighteen feet.
But we're still not meeting the intent of the raising and parking underneath, that was what we all agreed to on the rear.
How could it be changed to a four-bedroom without just faking it?
I think without changing the name of it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we did that with, with the Chinese restaurant. We made them design it.
He wants more parking, he wants the parking under.
I know he does, but Terry's saying it can't be done, but that's not, I, I'm not an architect, I can't tell her how to do it, I can't figure out how to do it.
I make a comment?
But there's not room to put two cars in. Go ahead.
We are adding previous coverage here, this is currently the shed in this corner.
Yeah, he was mistaken.
That's going to be demolished and this will be grass.
He was mistaken, we know there's more coverage, but that was a small.
Currently, there's three off-street spots, we were looking to keep three off-street spots so not to burden the street.
But you have to keep three spots for the five bedrooms. It, it's not a choice.
Right, that's why we, we, we just, we thought we put a car under the building that's a third.
I understand, that's what I say, you're stuck with what you have. She says you have a retaining wall that you're, a supporting wall that you can't move, so you have eight feet, even though it's really six and a half of blocking the sidewalk. Well, that's the architect. Well, that's the architect. I, I can't tell her how to do it. I would, you know, people tell me how to do tax returns. I'm right, they're wrong.
While I understand the reasoning for not allowing space in front of the overhead door, and particularly on a new home when you're starting from scratch, again, one of the reasons that we come to the zoning board is when we have conditions where, no matter how hard we try, we cannot meet all of them on an existing home.
Exactly.
Which is exactly why we come. So I am requesting that we have done the best we could with what we were given. We are making the lot and the project better for the homeowner. There is no detriment to the community other than the issue in front of the door, which is...
Which is a safety issue. Two safety issues, and you're, you're saying, well, it's really no detriment to the community. We have two safety issue detriments.
What, what's the second one? You say two.
Backing out of the driveway and blocking the sidewalk.
There isn't room to actually put a car, even with the sidewalk. You couldn't get a car...
Well, that's where I made my offhanded comment, because when you're jammed up in the summer, they just pull in there and leave it. And I'm not saying you do that. I'm saying what happens in this town from our billionaire experience, and that's why the rule was there, because people just do it. And again, I say people, not you. And to say we won't park there just doesn't fly.
The alternative that, that we can offer, and it's not a good alternative, and it's not something that will make his life better, but we could delete a bedroom by turning that back into an office, which is mostly a technicality. Take the closet away, add a door back in, and now it is back to being the home office. So by then, we would only need to have two spaces. We really would like to keep the space under the garage. That was part of the, the whole design concept. But if you are not going to grant that, the alternative is to live with only two spaces.
Normally, in most, in any other case, I would say you're just changing the title. But in this case, you're taking something that was it then and turning it to a bedroom, so you're saying we just won't do that. I can accept that argument as opposed to just saying we're not gonna call it a bedroom. Does that make sense, Craig, would I, to you?
Yeah, yes.
It, it was already a non-bedroom, so just don't turn that in. Leave it a non-bedroom without the, without the closets and all that stuff.
Then the problem is that the house is being raised, and the only reason we're letting the house go that high is because of parking, and we're not doing the parking, so the house isn't gonna be able to go that high.
Unless they ask for a variance.
Unless they get the variance.
Yeah, and I don't see a, do you see a big deal with that variance? Go up another foot or two feet?
Oh, oh, with the high, oh, no, no.
A technical, yes. But again, that's a technicality that we're stuck with, with what these people have, and we're preventing the problems of, of the driveway.
Terry, Terry, I have a question.
Yes.
Can I point to it here?
Just use the microphone, Mr. Terry.
Yeah, yeah. Is, is there enough space to swing cars in there and get two cars in them? Definitely not.
Oh, no. Definitely not.
Okay.
You need like thirty feet for that.
I have the same question.
One second, we're thinking of something. They could drop it, drop it like six inches, and they still have all that storage just down there. Right?
I tried to see if we could get more cars in the garage with steel beams and more construction, but it's still not doable. I just looked, there's nothing happening. Can't, can't get three cars.
Ten minutes ago, it's still not gonna fly. Talking, because it's still, the, the edge of the building is still only eight and a half feet away from the thing. So even if you don't have a garage door there, or even if it's open, am I right, it's still gonna be...
No, but they would have to move the interior parking space in ten feet, and they can't do that, she said.
Don't you eliminate the curb cut then?
What?
Wouldn't you eliminate that curb cut there?
If they don't put a garage underneath, sure. The variance, this is, this is to the board. The variance that we're giving them, or we're not, they don't need a variance, you know how much it is? It's six inches. So we will be giving them a variance of six extra inches to have the proper height down there. It's only six inches. Some of them are three feet. In this case, it's six inches. Has the, do you see an engineer problem with that, or, I'm trying to come up with a best of a bad situation.
If, if we left it open as a carport with only a structural support on the corner and left this open and this open, with that, and, and kept the eighteen foot wide curb cut, so he could park his car in that carport, would that not be okay?
Yeah.
Carport is what?
Yes, 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 yes.
And that solves, that solves the problem?
Yes.
Okay, so what we have is we will open up the wall here with a column to hold the house up, and we will take away the door and have your opening here. Your car can still park. We can still have eighteen feet, and we have one, two, three legal parking spaces.
And that provides them the line of sight, takes away the safety issue, but...
So Terry, is that gonna be a full beam across to the column, and then everything else will be open?
Yeah, the, how, house will have to be held up on a very, very large column right there.
I like that. I like that. We like that. We like that.
Yeah, move your one spot back to the property line.
So now you're done with the zinning?
We're done.
You still have a problem with it?
No, I don't have a problem. I, I do have an issue with the location of the sidewalk and parking space.
No, no, there's only gonna be one parking space from here to here. There's not gonna be two. One parking space.
Right, it'll be in line with this space right here. It's it right here.
You're still gonna keep that?
No garage door. So...
No garage door.
Right, it'll be open.
Five ends, okay, wall, you're gonna wall.
That, if you do this, no wall, no garage.
Right here.
It's coming down.
Over here, here.
No, you're leaving the den the den.
The car comes in.
Yeah, right, well, that's...
One at a, one at a time. If they provide the third spot by having it from the property line, and I would appreciate it if it was from the grass line, eighteen feet in, then they have three parking spots, and there's no problem with a fifth bedroom.
So we will keep that spot, we will keep this spot, and we will add, this spot will pull out to here. And this will be open. There'll be a column to hold up the house on this corner, but this will be open and this will be open.
And you'll have a twenty-foot space there. And it'll be more than the eighteen to, to make the eighteen start at the grass.
Yes.
I think it was Mr. Pitts here. Is this, they're gonna leave that one the way it is. Is that okay? Oh, yes, this and this is two parking spots. Yeah, this is a problem right here.
But that exists. That's there right now.
Is the thirty-six feet from here to here, where's the thirty-six feet from?
Just inside, oh, so it's inside.
How much is that?
Can the elevator move it?
No door.
Can the elevator move it? Can the elevator move it again?
What? We're all on the record here, so, Terry, can the elevator go back two feet? It can't.
It can't.
Why can't it?
Because it has to work on all four levels, and it doesn't work on the, on the two levels above. It has to be there.
So, so the first level is the, uh, the laundry room, right? It can't move?
Here's, here's the shaft here, man.
Right.
Also, we'll have trouble fitting the utilities if we try to move it two feet. We're gonna run into a problem.
What, what utilities?
And then the middle of the, down in the laundry, uh, in the back, in what is the, the rear side yard here.
Well, what, what, you, you gotta shower there. You can make the shower smaller. So the first floor you're in, you're, you're opening up into a laundry layout.
Yeah, that can be adjusted.
That can be adjusted. Then we go to the second floor, and you open it up into a living room.
There would be no room for the couch.
That could be, that could be adjusted. Furniture. And then the third floor, you're, you, you got the elevator equipment closet, which you could, you know, I mean, you don't need a lot of room for it.
If they moved the sidewalk out fourteen inches. Oh! That solves the problem. Right, sorry. Move the sidewalk. Make your governor's strip smaller.
It's gonna be damaged anyway from the construction.
What?
And also, this is a liability on the owner's property.
Well, it's gonna get smaller. It's, it's a foot. It's a fourteen inches.
When you come down from the neighbors, it's gonna jut out, isn't it?
They can have a transition here.
It's, it's, it's fourteen inches.
They can have a transition here, that way you don't have to walk around here. Nice, right, yeah, that, that's good. Let's do it. That's good.
Yeah.
Yeah, that solves everything.
Over on this side, and here it's over here, and it's big bag.
Yeah, it doesn't...
Can we leave the elevator where it is?
Yes, yeah.
Do we decide, right?
Do we decide, okay.
Do we get an architectural fee for this? I'm adamant on those safety issues, and I think the board is too, and I, you know, and again, you're stuck with what you have, but I think if, if we do it this way,
Looking good.
everybody's happy.
Who knows, Tom? I'm more confused than when I started, that's for sure.
So, so it's my understanding, just to recap, everyone quiet, please. Five bedrooms. The grant, the parking underneath the building will be open, so you don't have to, you don't have to worry about the variance for the garage door setback to the, to this property line. Plus, plus... The back of the sidewalk will be moved in, so the back of the sidewalk is co-linear with the property line. It, it's a, reduces the liability on you for public sidewalk on your property. The pent roof will be around both sides, two-thirds of the height, and that's pretty much it. You're welcome, sir. I've been trying to wrap my head around it for weeks, how to do it, and with the geniuses in this room, we came up with it. I couldn't come up with it. Okay, anything else from the board? Are you done, Jim?
I think so.
You haven't done anything. We did all your work for you.
I'm just listening.
There's nobody here, is there? Public? Seeing no one from the public, uh, public portions, open and closed. Anything else on the board? Rogers, are there any concerns you have at this point now?
I think they've resolved all the concerns, and I think they worked well with us through this through.
Thank you.
To the, you had a vote.
No.
Let's make it official.
You gonna summarize it, Leo?
I'll, I'll try, yeah. Jim, I'll turn it over to you to summarize. So my understanding, that garage door setback variance is gonna go away, but the, the, is it still technically three variances for the third floor deck? I mean, I know what they're doing, it's a condition, but the variance is almost steady.
They're, they're a lot less than what they were before.
Okay, so it's a C variance application. We need a mo, motion in a second. The garage door setback variance is gonna go away because one of the conditions of approval, it's gonna be, they're gonna create that open carport area. I guess I'll get to that now. I'll move the sidewalk to, to coincide with the property line, so they can get a full space in the carport, two on the side, so three total parking spaces, five bedrooms. So that'll, that eliminates that variance. As far as the, um, the, the, uh, third floor deck, they're gonna put that pent, pent roof around it on both sides, two-thirds of the height, as discussed and represented during the course of the hearing. It does still require variances for the third floor deck location, technically doesn't face, uh, the front of the house, and the size of the decks, and for the railings for the third floor deck. Again, I think I noticed, and I think I noted the conditions with the carport moving the sidewalk and that pent roof on the third floor deck. Anything else in Mr. McCarnon's report unless we otherwise address, and then, uh, the standard conditions, any representation made by the applicant, subject to any outside approvals that may be required.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Tom Collins?
Mr. Swift, you did an excellent job.
I just showed up.
Really did. No, you did. You let everything play out without interfering, and I wanna commend you for that. Most attorneys would lock on up instead of letting it flow. With the homeowner and Terry, you guys did a great job with the concessions. I think that you really do meet a C two, where you are doing a great improvement, and you see one where there's a hardship because you are in a flood, flood zone, and you're getting yourself out of the flood zone. Plus, you're improving airlight and open space because you're keeping part of it of the bottom floor open, which everybody knows I'm a big proponent of, because people try to enclose that bottom floor and then put gyms and bedrooms and dens.
Ping pong tables.
It's cra... Yeah, but that can roll way outside. See, I like ping pong. So, but, uh, it's a nice design. You did a very good job. You guys have a lot of patience, and I vote in favor.
Thank you.
Craig Palmasino?
Well, you're not tearing down a house and building a new slammer, and, um, I like that, and, uh, you know, he, he made, it's good to be able to work with, with the people on the other side here, and, um, I'm all for it.
Thank you.
Richard Patterson?
Uh, as originally presented, I could not vote yes on this, and as I said, I could not see any way around it, and, um, I'm very pleased that with the architect, the attorney sitting aside, but the architect and the homeowner and the input from the board really worked out in this case, that we got rid of the safety issues. They kept the, the extra bedroom and, or kept the amount of bedrooms that they originally had. Uh, so I think this is a win-win for everybody. Uh, I'm glad that somebody did figure it out, so I vote yes.
Thank you.
John Pitts?
Uh, yeah, I'm at the library a couple times a week. I love looking at this house. I can go to the library. I'm glad you're keeping the essence of the design. The last project we had at the last planning board meeting, we had a similar sort of interaction with the planning board and the architect, and we were able to resolve it. I, I personally enjoy it quite a bit. Appreciate your cooperation and, uh, and working with us, with us on this. I approve.
Thank you.
Margaret Gubernalti?
I thank you for all the consideration, and, um, I vote in favor of the application for the same reasons the other board members have noted.
Stephen Giasecki?
I'm gonna agree with the rest of the board. Um, we, we worked it out. We worked it out. We were part of your firm, I guess. I approve.
Thank you.
Michael Ruffio?
Terry, Richard, Jim, thanks for your patience. We appreciate it. Thanks for your willingness to, uh, compromise, and thank you for your flexibility. I'm glad we were all able to, to work together and get it done. Um, I agree with the other board members, and I vote yes.
Thank you.
Andrew Campbell?
The attorney had me at hello. I really like the, the design. Um, I, the fact that you're not tearing it down and lifting it is, is always a plus with me. Airlight and space is really good, and I vote in favor.
Thank you.
And Michael Richmond?
Yeah, I think it was a brilliant idea to, um, open up that, uh, parking area, right, Tom? You know, moving forward, I think that'll be a good alternative for some architects, the... You know, moving forward, I think that'll be a good alternative for some architects to think about that, you know, so I approve it.
Thank you.
The application is approved with nine in favor and zero opposed.
And thanks for the board. I know this was, and, and Mr. McLaren, the last month or so, and, you know, collectively working together. We appreciate it. Thank you. Sure. That doesn't happen everywhere, believe me. Yeah, we're, we're, it's a good board, and look, I, I appreciate some of the innovative comments, because clearly that was something we hadn't considered. So, all's well but ends.
Thanks. Any other business?
Have a nice holiday. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Yes, Jim.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approved.